Okay, it's five o'clock on Monday, December 2nd. We will call the city council main order. I'd like to welcome everyone. Everyone, please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Nancy.
Rodney?
Here.
Jessica?
Here.
Don?
Erica.
Kathy?
Here.
Harley?
Here.
Brad?
Here.
Entertaining motion to approve today's agenda.
So, second.
A motion from Harley, second from Brad. Any discussion? Vote, please, Nancy.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Across the mirrors desk, I'd like to thank Gavin Weber. He's our videographer tonight. And Gavin, he's gonna be our neighbor. So, thanks for being here, Gavin. And just reminder that the movie Silent Night in Algonah is back. It premiered here two years ago. And it's playing here again December 6th through the 12th at the State 5 Theater. There are multiple times for that showing. So, just check their website and Facebook page. But I hope you're able to go see that again. And those of you who see it, you may see some familiar faces in that movie. So, council, if anything, do you would like to share? Hearing that, we'll move to Jacob Abid from the City Minister.
Well, a few reminders regarding snow. Hard to believe it's here, but this morning reminded you that you hadn't already started preparing for it. So, just reminder on the city's snow ordinance. So, when we declare a snow emergency, that has an effective start and end time. During that time, no vehicles are to be parked on city streets. That's allowed the safe and efficient operation of the snow plows. And then in our downtown city parking lots, we have the posted side A, side B to rotate the parking overnight from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. And what that really helps with is just being able to have the space to clear out one side makes it go a lot faster. Gets a lot better cleanup with that. And then the next day, switch over so we can make that final pass and then get that snow hauling out of there. So, when we do declare a snow emergency, we announce it on KLGA and post it on the city Facebook page. And then it is sent out through the Alert Island Education System. And that is a statewide system that you can either the city website, we have a link, or you could go to county emergency manager. But you can sign up to receive all sorts of weather alerts or opt out of ones you don't want to receive. So, you can opt in to want us to receive notices when there's a snow emergency from Algonah, you know, or if there's other things that interest you as well as by jurisdiction. So, just another way to stay informed about snow with just a good service and resources out there for incremental weather in general to be aware of. That's all I have.
Good. Thank you. We'll move to the consent agenda. And that includes approving the minutes from our November 18th city council meeting, approve the bills to be paid this cycle, approve a Class C retail alcohol license from AK's Chrome Kitchen, and approve the minutes from the retail revolving loan committee that Matt and I. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Don. Any discussion? Vote, please, Nancy.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number nine under new business concerns the Algonah Municipal Utilities Budget.
Just real quick, I have one other announcement I forgot to share. The parks restroom has been closed for the season now. So, another one should be related. And with that, I'll hand it off to John Billstein with Algonah Municipal Utilities.
All right, mayor, members of the city council, thank you for your time this evening. AMU Board of Trustees approved the 2025 AMU budget at their meeting last week on Thursday, November 26th. The approved budget reflects increased revenues and expenses for all three utilities, electric, water, and communications next year. To help manage these rising costs, we anticipate a rate increase for water, which we typically do every year, inflationary rate increase. And communications, specifically dynamic TV or video. Just a little update for you. The last time we adjusted dynamic TV rates was in February of 2022. Since that time, programming costs have risen significantly. And we're not covering our costs as a result of programming increases. And we are, of course, dedicated to adjusting our activities to address inflation's impacts while continuing to invest in our infrastructure. The budget that you see in front of you here reflects both keeping up with all of our operational costs and strong competitive capital improvements, including major projects. One of those would be the installation of a fiber project. And we would do this in a minute. Jacob's got some of our pictures that will show along with the associated sale of electric revenue bonds for the fiber project in the budget. That is represented with a $7 million number there. That number will be adjusted. And that will be based on discussions that we'll have with all of you, Jacob, city staff. As you may be aware, that we have a maximum amount of $10 million that we can sell bonds a year and be bank qualified. So, we try to make sure that we coordinate both city and AMU bond sales to make sure that we stay below that $10 million number. So, we'll adjust that accordingly as we talk, as you're working through your capital needs and needs for potential revenue bond issuances. So, for 2025, the total productive revenues for all three utilities amounted to $34,394,053. While total expenses are expected to be $33,882,623. That results in a lower excess revenue of $511,430 for the year. And of course, we already talked about the $7 million for fiber project expansion and then the bond issuance. That number, of course, will may change as we discuss that. And then, once we know what our bids are like, which we hope to go out and bid for that fiber project early next year. You have a major projects. And I think, Jacob, are you gonna show a few of those?
Yeah, if you want me to, give it to you.
Yeah, if you just wanna hear some point, that shows some of the maps.
Okay.
So, for the electric, you can go back here. We have a little over $9 million for the total electric budget next year. That number is higher than what you've seen in the past because that represents the build out to fiber, continuing to finish our fiber build out within our communities' service territory. So, just the next slide will just show you kind of the overall service territory that we have for communications, which includes everything within the city limits of Algonah plus all housing subdivisions outside of Algonah, from Oak Lake to Royal Oaks, to all those areas we serve with communications today. We'll finish all of the fiber as part of this overall project. Convert from a hybrid fiber co-op system to a complete fiber to premise, fiber alone business system. That project, most likely, we think, take a couple of years. And you can see there the major amounts that we anticipate for that project. A little over $12 million. Moving on to the next slide, Jacob. Let's just, this happens every year. We have capital expenditures at the O4 Power Plant. As you know, Algonah owns just about 3% of that plant. And those are just typical yearly capital expenditures, nothing major. And that's our share for that project. So, the next slide will show one of our mini electric conversion projects from overhead and underground. This is a major one, feeder five, which goes from the AKB substation all the way to Hormel. And that project, we anticipate about $375,000 in that project next year. The next slide will show some of our other electric distribution. And this one is a project that comes right up Hall Street from our west substation, converting overhead and underground, following Hall Street right up here to the water plant. Now, that one is about a $75,000 project. The next major project is, again, from our west substation. This is in the area around Kennedy and Grove, Dodge to Minnesota, Emerald Boucher. And this will take care of the majority of our backyard utilities. So, our connections overhead to homes and backyards will be getting most of that underground with this project, which is about a $225,000 estimated project. Once that's complete and a few other smaller sections, we will have all, everything underground within the city limits except for major electric feeders, which that is our next step to work on those. We also have outside the city limits a project that is along Hungry Hollow Road, which is an inversion from overhead to underground there as well, where we have aging infrastructure and need to make some improvements. So, we moved that to from overhead to underground in that area. And then we will begin the process of working on our feeders number one and number two, which goes out to the four corners from our west substation, right down the street here, out to the four corners, converting all of those distribution feeders to underground and really cleaning up that area of the four corners. There is a caveat to that project in that we have applied for grant funds. And depending on the results of the grant funds, this project may have to move. We're hoping to hear some good news before the end of the year. But as you all know, with grants, we never know how that might turn out. Now, one thing I know that you all have as a priority is getting that welcome sign completed, updating that sign. And we have specifically asked Jacob and city staff to hold out on that a little bit because as we get all this conversion done, we'd like to look at maybe moving that sign a little bit so we can hide some electric infrastructure transformers. And the reason we want to do that is to clean up all those intersection there. And then we start putting our transformers back out there again. We thought it might be nice if we could work together and get that behind a sign as a little covering there. So, it'll be nice. We'll get everything converted there. And we will work with MediaCom as well to get them underground in that area. So, that'll be a major project. Next year, we'll really be purchasing the materials because some of the things that we need for that project at very long, many times. And then another one, it's a smaller project, but an important one is our power plant. And we just need to replace the roof. There's a couple of roofs there. So, we anticipate beginning that project next year, our power plant. We move to water. We have a couple of major projects, about $1 million in capital expenditures in the water. The first one is building a backwash retention pond. Today, we have backwash at a water treatment plant that we sent down to the city wastewater treatment plant. That is something that can be treated down there. City staff would prefer not to take it if we can avoid it. We think we have an innovative way that we can just use natural detention and percolation and just treat that by letting that just soak into the ground by putting some retention ponds there. That will reduce what we send to the wastewater treatment plant. It will reduce the cost to the water utility as well because obviously, we have to pay for that to go down to the wastewater treatment plant. And that is a payback. We think of about less than eight years to pay for all that project. So, we'll be working through all of the permitting with the IDNR next year. And we hope to get that project done next year. So, a little frame of reference. That is right down on originally streets of the property that was purchased by Algonah Municipal Utilities for future well field expansion. We'll do this in portion of that property. And then also have that area available for well fields and some other things in the future. The other major project in the water treatment plant is in conjunction with complete street reconstruction projects that you'll be planning to do in 2025 on Nebraska Street and Thornton Street. As a result of those projects, it makes most sense to replace the water main infrastructure. We're completely removing the streets. We're doing a lot of infrastructure improvements. So, we'll do that in conjunction with the project that you'll be doing in 2025. So, that'll be an improvement for the water treatment, you know, the water distribution system. And then one other slide. This is a really small amount. But I just wanted to highlight this. Last year, we did a project to paint fire hydrants. We decided to tap on that a little different than we had in the past, which was a summer employee that scraped and everything. We had a great contractor that came from Corworth that did last year about 290 hydrants. And this year, we only have about 30 hydrants to be painted along the highway areas that we're gonna get painted. And then others, they don't all need to be painted. So, we've been painting those last year and this year. So, that's a big project.
So, now, once upon a time, the hydrants were painted different colors according to flow. Is that still the industry that they all go back to yellow?
We are not. We've done the safety yellow, which is the color that we get all the hydrants. The flow in discussions with the fire department, when they're in the heat of the battle, it's just really hard for them to decide, oh, we should hook up to that. We really try to make sure that any hydrant they hook up to is gonna meet their needs. So, that was the biggest reason for it. And it didn't make a lot of sense to continue to try and just paint the caps different colors. We know what they are. And we have all that in our G I S system. But we don't paint them like that anymore. And some of you will remember, before we started to go to the safety yellow color, we were like a sky blue. About 25 years ago, we decided to move away from that too and go to a yellow, a little easier to see without.
So, also in years past, did you just paint a few at a time like eight, 10 years ago? Or did you just concentrate in a couple of years?
Yeah, what we would do is we would just physically scrape them or grind them. And we never got good paint and adhesion to that. So, when we learned about what some of these folks with the company in Corworth was doing and a couple of other communities, we talked to them. And this is, we think it's gonna really work out well. So, we worked with an engineer that we use on paintings and coatings, like on our water tower, and then made sure that we were developing or using good specs to get a long-lasting product, we hope.
This is probably the conversation on people over the city's utility tab. But this summer, I was talking to John. And I asked him, what did you guys do with your fire hydrants? And how you paint those? Because like, they look so sharp. And like, a lot of times, they just don't look that way. So, it's just, you know, those little, you know, those little things all add up.
It's, it's, yeah. It works so much better than that. As a former summer employee at Municipal Utility, I paint those things. We kind of slap them on. It just never, it never looks, it looks good from a distance. It doesn't last very long.
Well, maybe you can hire that company to paint stripes on the road because those don't last very long either.
Well, luckily, we get a lot less abuse on the hydrants on roads.
Yeah, that's true.
And then the last thing is just for communications, the bulk of what we'll be doing will be part of the electric utility and the fiber project that I mentioned earlier, all throughout the community. But we also replace some batteries. Our head end runs on DC power. So, we convert DC power to DC. And then we have battery back in the plant. So, we'll be replacing some batteries. And that number will probably go down from what we budgeted because we won't have to put as much in because we have a lot less equipment today in our head end than we did many, many years ago. Those are major items. Any questions, anybody, guys? Thanks for the nice update. I appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
So, with the order that establishes the AMU board and press the use of privacy and management utility, they approved the budget officially. For our record keeping and kind of a formal process, this resolution simply accepts the budget that was approved by AMU. Motion to approve resolution for AMU's number?
Second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Brad. Any other discussion? Vote, please, Nancy.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Agenda item number 10, approves a small business revolving loan fund to Bear Beauty Studio.
Yes, this is a small business revolving loan fund of $20,000 to Emerald Boucher to purchase and renovate the downtown property at 114 North Dodge Street to expand her current business, which is currently located just across the alley. I think it's 14 North Dodge. So, it's now at 114 North Dodge Street. The RLF committee met and recommended approval of the loan to move and expand her business.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Don, second from Jessica. Any discussion? Vote, please, Nancy.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Motion carried. And agenda item number 11 is also approving a small business revolving loan fund. But this is to Evolve Physical Therapy.
Yes, Evolve Physical Therapy, which is run by Audrey Feener. It is seeking a $20,000 small business RLF to finance the purchase renovation and new related equipment, furniture, and fixtures of 714 East State Street. It's a former Hamilton Vet Clinic to establish physical therapy business there. Same as the past loan the RLF committee met and recommend this approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Harley, second from Rodney. Any discussion? Vote, please, Nancy.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And might I just say best wishes to Emerald and Audrey and for expanding your businesses? So, wish you well in the future. Agenda item number 12 pertains to the airport revenue use policy.
So, this resolution adopts a rather simple policy stating that any of the revenues received or generated by the Algonah Municipal Airport are to be used exclusively by the airport. So, when we had our audit in FY '24 done, it was noted that we did not have a formal policy in place for this. It's been a longstanding practice. But with the federal funds that we have, $2,000 is one of the formalities we have to have in place. So, this resolution adopts that revenue use policy for the airport. And these are revenues that come from federal and state grants, but then sale of aviation fuel, leases of farm ground, hanger leases, you know, misleading some other items. But the bulk of, I guess, the focus of this is on the multimillion dollar state federal grants that we get for that airport to operate and make improvements.
Move to approve resolution. Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, second from Jessica. Any discussion? Vote, please, Nancy.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 13 concerns ARPA funds.
So, in 2021, amidst of the COVID-19 pandemic, federal government passed the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. Including that was approximately $350 billion that went to local jurisdictions to be spent. Originally, when that was rolled out, there's a lot of rules on how those funds could be spent. Those have since more or less been rescinded. There's kind of just a few kind of fundamentals that need to be followed at this point. But since 2021, we've approved four allocations of ARPA dollars, which are kind of laid out here on this graph. And so, with those allocations, we had $200,000 towards EMS, Algonah EMS. And that was based on the assumption that these funds would be spent through calendar year 2024 and still be operating that EMS service. Obviously, in July '23, when the county took that over, the funds we had planned for that second half were no longer necessary. And so, you've basically the unspent of that original $288,623.37. So, that, those funds are available for reallocation, which leaves us with an estimated $157,577 of ARPA funds yet to be allocated. The funds are required to either be spent by the end of calendar year 2024 or otherwise be allocated towards a capital project and then spent by end of calendar year 2026. So, what the resolution does is kind of just document our past allocations, the funds that are available for reallocation with the change in EMS. And then states that the remaining balance, that $157,577, those would go towards the 2025 Nebraska Street Thornton Street parking lot project. And then as just kind of a catch-all, if there's any otherwise allocated but not spent funds as of December 31st, those will automatically be allocated for that project as well. Other, without that, it's a usual loser program. So, in total, we had, we received just shy of $807,000 in that time of federal money.
Approve the allocation.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Rodney. Any discussion? Vote, please, Nancy.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 14 is to set a public hearing.
At the last, council meeting, I'm sorry. We refer to planning zoning, the rezone of the lot on Spur Street, which is owned by the One Area Economic Development Corp. That plan zoning meeting is now being scheduled. That'll be taking place on December 4th. So we are proposing to set the public hearing before city council to be on December 16th to get public input and then we plan on considering the first reading on the 16th as well.
Motion to approve the public hearing for December 16th, by the hearing.
Second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Kathy. Any discussion? Vote please Nancy.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 15 pertains to the December holiday hours.
At the November Ways and Means Committee, we met and one of the items we discussed was kind of our operating city hall hours for Christmas holiday with it being only Wednesday this year. In the past, council has kind of extended our default holiday hours of being closed on Christmas and half day of Christmas Eve to kind of connect with a weekend there. So the Ways and Means Committee recommended approving the official city hall operating hours for the Christmas holiday to be Monday through Wednesday. So that'd be the 23rd, 24th, and 25th.
Move to approve the December holiday hours.
Second.
Motion from Don, second from Jessica. Any discussion? Just hope the weather clock breaks with them.
Well, if they need to, we'll still be out.
And then New Year's just leaves the same.
Yep. Well, I will pass along and I know the staff much, appreciate it.
Yeah, bet. Vote please Nancy.
Rodney.
Yes.
Jessica.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 16, this is the second notification of terms of Rose Kane, Brandy Deers, and Adam Throne. They're on the Planning and Zoning Commission and their appointments expire January 1st, 2025. And these appointments are by the city council and they serve five year terms. Again, that's just the second notification. Agenda item number 17 is also a second notification of terms of Morgan Keeker and Ben Kern on the Housing Commission. They expire also on the 1st of January, 2025. Those are three year terms and they're appointed by the mayor. Agenda item number 18 is also a second notification of Bob Ketchum's term on the Broadband Commission expiring on December 31st, 2024. And that's a five year term and that appointment is also a mayoral appointment. And then our final agenda item is agenda item 19. That's also a second notification of Brian Ernst's term on the Tree Commission that also expires on the 31st of December of this year. And he's on the Tree Board and those are three year terms appointed by the city council. So with that, it is 5:30 and I would entertain a motion to adjourn today's city council meeting.
Motion adjourned.
Motion is second, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.